Meeting of the Falmouth School Committee to order, please join me in absolute pride. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You could remain standing for just one minute. I want to recognize a moment of silence for Al Kolacheski, who was a former teacher here at the high school as well as a coach of both girls and boys basketball and girls softball. Thank you.
And if I may, also for Ray Kenny, who is principal of several of our schools as well as coaching and prominent figure in this town.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
Could I just mention another one? Dottie Cummings passed away.
Oh, no.
Yes, yes, Dottie Cummings, it was yesterday, I believe. Yeah, Dottie was a special teacher here for many years.
Special needs.
Mm-hmm, special needs.
Anybody else? All right, short quote for the short meeting. This is from Omar Kayan. Be happy for this moment. This moment is your life. All right, first item on the agenda is public session, public comment. Andrea, you here to speak?
I don't, I know. No, I have nothing to say.
I also wanted to remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as chair and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Next item on the agenda is student advisory report. Theodore.
All right, so I have the results of my parent's survey. Just pass those packets. I finished this over the weekend, perfected it. Once everyone gets a copy out, I'll go over a few things shortly.
So this was a survey that was sent to parents?
Yes, I, it was posted on the website and then I closed it on October 25th.
How many responses did you get?
Two hundred sixty.
That's great.
Yeah.
How many, three hundred and sixty?
Two hundred and sixty.
That's a great response.
Still sure.
To, was it to all parents?
Yes, it was like, there was a roll call and then I knew I was going to have to just respond. So the first pie chart here is just of who we had responding and it was mostly mothers, which is not surprising for this type of survey. And the next graph is of parents having to help their children with homework and it was pretty even, but there was still more people saying no. And then below that, to the right, there's a graph that is kind of off of that for the people who did say yes with subjects and it was mainly math and English, forty point seven percent English, forty five point one percent math, so that is a little more math. On the next page, I think these two graphs are some of the most important and prominent differences. What do you think would be most beneficial to your child and children? And seventy three point eight percent, which is a huge majority, said less homework. And what kind of impact on the next graph does homework have on your family time and activities? That is negative sixty six point two percent. So parents are saying that it is bad for both their family and their kids' mental health. On page three, this is about electronic devices. These two graphs, I was just kind of curious to see what people would say. So do electronic devices have a negative effect on your child and children? And many, or not many, but the majority did say no and then some were undecided. Twenty six point nine percent said yes, so it is pretty close. But the ones who said yes, it's like probably because of how their kids can't stay focused and whatnot. And then for the time of day that children complete homework, I felt like this played into the sleep factor, so I just wanted to see what we would get for this. And it's nice to see that it's around six to 10 p.m., most kids are doing their homework. But then this wasn't open response questions, so some of the parents said that like during the sports season, their kids got to bed way later because they have away gives, especially like versus NOSIT, you don't get home until very late. On the last graph, this was just a kind of open-ended question. What, if anything, should change about Falmouth's current homework practices? And I just wanted to see if parents had suggestions. And I tried to narrow it down, but it was, there was a lot of really good responses and so that's why the purple is mostly detailed responses and then below that there's just a little heading. And I posted all the results in alphabetical order and I'm not going to go through all of them because my time is short. But some of the comments, just knowing that it counts as a percentage toward my kid's grade is stress. That's on page five and these are just kind of good to look through just to see where parents are at. And then on page thirteen, there is also another open response question, results. Please describe homework in a few sentences, which is very open-ended. And those are also some, something to look through and that's all I have.
So Theodore, take a few more minutes. I think this is really important. What, you know, having read through all these detailed responses, my God, what do you, is there a theme that you take from it?
So for the one, what should change about Falmouth's practices? A lot of parents were just saying again, like as you saw in the first two different graphs, they're asking for less homework and they're saying it shouldn't count as this much of your grade and it's a huge stress factor. That's basically what I saw. There are some parents who said that you can focus on quality over quantity. One of the comments I thought was great, I'll just read like word for word. Both of my older children say they feel there's a lot of unnecessary busywork assigned. One of my children said, understand why they give us math problems to do at night. They want to make sure we do the problems a few times so that if we have questions on the material, we're able to ask the teacher the next day. Do they need to give us 20 problems though? If I don't know how to do the math, it will be apparent within the first three problems and then it's impossible for me to complete the homework and I know what to ask the teacher the next day. If I know how to do it, it will be apparent within the first three problems and then I'm just doing the same thing over and over. So that's kind of, a lot of people were taking that same route with their answers.
Questions for Theodore?
Not so much a question, but a comment. Thank you for continuing your surveys and collecting this really helpful information for not only yourself, but I think for everyone who's listening. Great job, as always.
Thank you.
Next steps?
Next steps?
Are there any next steps?
Yes, actually, maybe not this year, but junior year I was planning on doing a faculty survey.
On homework?
Yes, how they feel and how they're going to address the issue with all this other results.
One thing I found interesting in it is interdepartmental communication because I know from being a teacher myself, that the last week before grades close, nobody gets bombed. I mean, and I know kids must be with distress in that time, but just maybe, I don't know, have you done any dialogue about that?
A lot of people, myself included, are talking about kind of having people and different teachers talking to each other about what work to assign what night. And I feel like if that's going to be like an actual thing we move forward with, it needs to be a lot further looked into. That is beyond the scope of what I've done so far, but I definitely intend to look into that with my faculty survey about communication.
Okay, thanks.
Any parents talking detail about the whole issue of stress? Was it like, yeah, my, you know, my kid's stressed out or was there real, hey, you know, my kid's stressed out and I need to take him to the doctor and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
If I did one of those like word things that puts what word is biggest, I mean, I'm just looking through this right here, I see the word stress, here, you see the word stress.
You don't remember anything?
I don't remember anything, but I do know that.
Good reading. May I ask one other question?
Sure. Two-part question on the faculty part. Are you going to show this to the faculty?
Yeah, the information is available.
Okay, and why would you want to wait till next year to get their input once, once they've seen this?
Because I have a lot of other ways. It's the truth, actually. I'm not going to figure it out.
I think that just tells, I mean, because I, I thought the exact same thing because what you do is very high quality and so of course it brings the next piece and you've already thought about the next piece and now of course I'm already anxious for the next piece.
I have started to like write the survey and all, but.
No pressure to get it done, but we're going to want to see it first.
I'll keep you updated. Might happen this year.
A question about research. So I've been researching homework lately and have you done some research on?
Yeah, I've actually been in contact with her again. She's given me a bunch of great articles about like schools, even with the Massachusetts that have like changed their homework policies and yeah, it's crazy.
What have you learned about the homework for secondary students?
Secondary?
Well, for like high school, junior high, high school.
Generally, a lot of people have, like teachers have kind of misinterpretations on their homework that like the work that they're giving out to students. They do it for the right purposes, but sometimes they're giving too much and that's what I've learned from the schools that have written these articles and that they've been trying to fix that like we are.
Thanks.
Theodore, your question about homework helping in what subjects, was that a multiple choice or was that? The first page. My, where my question is, is.
This, this was, so this is basically like a, an off of the blue and it was an open response. So basically I said, do you have to help your children complete homework? And if so, on what subjects? I just broke that one part off and it was a paragraph text. And then I just looked through the responses manually.
So, so there was no mention of history, social studies, languages? It really just kind of broke down into science?
There were a small percentage of those, yeah.
Any other questions for Theodore?
Just a comment, great work, of course, the color charts and everything really delineate everything. More of an overall comment as we, you know, look to try to make life a little bit easier for the students who want to actually also factor in that sometimes things that are challenging is what makes you improve. And I'd like to see, you know, I do see, I love that you have the question in there, you know, would you think more, more homework is better? And it's interesting, it's a 1.5 percent. And I kind of think as parents remember back to their own high school days, it's like almost saying, you know, do you want more taxes, you know? So that's something that somebody's going to factor in as they answer these surveys. But I also like to see what the international dynamic is with some of these countries that were, you know, maybe lagging behind. Again, it's just a leap here that I'm making, but I tend to think that some of those countries might focus a little bit more on repetition and be a little more of like, you know, more of the repetitive kind of grunt work that actually does pay dividends. And it might not be fun to do, but it does pay dividends. So that's sort of the, that's sort of the other side of it. On the, on the idea of when the homeworks are assigned and when they are with the electronic aspect, one thing that I do think we should try to stay away from, that I know does exist, is we have homework assignments or project assignments that are due electronically on timeframes that are outside of the school hours. So let's say for example Friday night by midnight, a specific assignment might be due. I don't want to have us popping into our students' lives at Friday night at midnight. Maybe a case in point, it could be that it might be giving the students extra time, but I do feel as if everyone's deadline driven or deadline motivated. So when you say it's Friday, when the teacher will say it's Friday night at midnight, we're creeping into their lives a little bit too much and I think they should have that time space when they leave from Friday then to Sunday, not Friday, not Saturday, not Sunday, having an assignment be as a due time to electronically have to submit in an assignment. That's my only comments.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? I'm wondering about like the demographics of parents who responded to this. If their students were, you know, athletes, what percentage were athletes? What percentage of students were in AP classes? Do you, do you know that?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but on one of these graphs it did say like this, the graph, what time of your day does your child, children complete homework? That was an open response question and from reading that, I turned it into a pie chart. But a lot of, the people who said 10 p.m. and after were parents with kids who are athletes. And so that's probably a close percentage of what you're asking.
I also think it's going to be extremely interesting reading because as I'm glancing through this right now, I get to one comment that just to me is really appropriate is, my daughter is a senior in honor and honors an AP student. Her homework load is, is quite often is several hours each day. It puts tremendous stress on her to achieve her homework as well as her volunteer and extracurricular activities. Here's a kid who's involved with everything. And then my son is a freshman, but I look at a kid who's AP, athlete, athletic or extracurriculars as well as volunteering services and the responsibility of doing homework as well as, hey, I'm obviously going to go to a good college.
Yeah.
So it's going to be interesting to go through these and I think the 260 responses outstanding, but we're going to get a lot of contrasting differences. And you know, you look at, well, how responsible are students? Well, that's great to be responsible, but sometimes are we overwhelmed with what we're having to do?
I definitely think it's important.
How much work can you do, kid? And I applaud that young lady, she's doing a great job, but thank you for this. Some great input here.
Thank you, Theodore.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is superintendent Taylor's request approval of school improvement plans for the 2016-2017 school year. Nancy?
So everyone has had enough time to take a look at the school improvement plans. You've heard from all of the principals and I would ask that you approve their school improvement plans.
Questions for Nancy? Discussion? John?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the school improvement plans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I am quite interested in the spring in reference to the attendance factors because I know that that was really a critical issue of everyone who brought this school improvement plan.
And they've made it, as you know, one of their goals to take a look at that.
That's great.
And one of the questions that did come up at the school committee meeting was, what did attendance look like on half professional development days? And I did blast that out to everybody for you to take a look at.
Yeah.
And each time we have an admin council meeting with all the principals, we go over the attendance for that month and we start to look at patterns. You know, Falmouth High School, there's kind of a clear pattern on Mondays and Fridays. And so we're looking at what are we going to do to correct some of that.
Got you.
My only question has to do with, I'm looking down that in a minute, we have a first read on a policy that has to do with submission improvement of the school improvement plans.
Right.
So have we followed this year, this fall, have we followed what that policy says?
Yes, and we did some checking on that. And what I know, what I learned is that the school committee can't not approve of school improvement plans. What they can do is challenge the superintendent on the quality of the school, of the school improvement plan. So you can, I asked for your approval because I think it's important for the principals to know that, that you're on board. It's not really a vote because you can't really disapprove of them. It's kind of an interesting, and we, this has come up every year, the school improvement plan. So we just straightened out the language in that policy.
Any further questions or discussion? There's a motion on the floor to approve the school improvement plans for the 2016-17 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Next item is the first read of conditions to receive a Falmouth diploma policy, policy IKF.
So we've gone over a couple of policies that we think are outdated, they have been and are inaccurate. So we're, I'm not asking for you to vote or comment on them tonight, but I would like you to take time before our next meeting to take a look at that conditions to receive a Falmouth diploma.
Is, so this is, is this an existing policy?
Yes.
So what would be helpful to me would be to have what the changes are.
Okay.
A red line version, if you would.
Okay.
The other question I have immediately is, is this a district differentiated diploma or is this a state regs? Where the state comes in and says, we like to differentiate diplomas and we update the district to do that? Or does the state give you a format in order to do that? Or is this something that just the school district is doing?
No, I think there are regulations around this and I can check on that.
I appreciate that because I like to look at those regs.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have, the first read actually on four different policies. Also a first read on graduation in less than four years, policy IKF. First read on the submission approval of school improvement plan, policy, policy BDFA-E-2. And the first read on the school improvement plan, policy BDFA-E-1. So it's a first read, so we don't vote tonight. Any questions for Nancy on any of these policies? To the policies self-committing?
So if we can get a copy that has the changes, that would, my main question is just what are the hot lines of the big differences? What, doesn't mean as much to me if I don't know what was changed.
Sure. And a big part of the, let me just back up for one second. The graduation in less than four years, well, actually the certificate without graduation. These numbers, if you look in file IKF, I believe it's the very last page of that policy, those credit numbers were wrong. They hadn't been updated in a couple of years. So that was kind of the first thing that we started looking at and realizing that. But I can definitely get you the standing policies with it redlined so that you know what was changed. And then the last piece on the new policies, if you look at the submission and approval of the school improvement plans, we just reworked some of the language. I changed that November, that date in that first paragraph because if you remember, we used to do it differently.
The credits were different.
No, I've moved on to the submission and approval of school improvement plans. That, no, that's okay. The, because we changed how we were doing it. So the school improvement plans have to be approved by November 1st and that used to be, I believe in the spring because we did it differently.
Right.
Other questions for Nancy?
Can I, can I just make a comment about that policy?
Which policy?
The school improvement plan policy. I just would like to, just for us to consider not actually voting on approving the school improvement plans, but having discussion about it and if there's any recommendation we have. Just because I think it's a little confusing because we are voting on it and we did vote tonight and we, really our policy says that we're not supposed to be voting on it. So we're, we're reviewing it, not voting on it. So in the future, when we adopt this new policy.
I see what you're saying, submitted to, for the approval of the superintendent and then on to the school committee for review?
Yeah.
So you want to just say a review and not all?
I just, it would be much clearer because I feel like that might be how we got in the weeds before is just that there was votes being taken and.
But they can approve.
Right.
The conversation that we had with Mass was that you, the school committee could approve, but they couldn't disapprove. So, and that is really confusing.
Yeah.
I like the clarification on your.
Just review?
If we just, yeah. Just a review.
Yeah, and if we have any comments, we open it for.
They could come ask.
Right, we just do it during the presentation. We have the presentation and we discuss it and then.
I like being able to approve. I like the existing structure.
That's against.
It's against the policy.
Yeah.
The policy just says review.
Well, it's against this policy, but this policy is not approved yet.
But the, that's taken from the state, right?
From the regs.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, no, but what John's saying is he likes to be able to approve. He didn't say that he wants to vote to disapprove.
Exactly, just to really.
That's the confusion. That's the confusion. And this is what we tried to clarify. Vote to approve, but you can't vote to disapprove.
Exactly, yeah, that's all I'm saying.
But Steve, if we're voting.
Because otherwise.
What exactly?
Otherwise you remove any kind of a teeth on the approval. I mean, you could still then go back and say, you know, if you feel strongly about something, then you say despite the fact that we're not offering the approval. If you feel strongly about it, that's fine, but if it's something that we've all come to the conclusion that we're strongly unified on, it's, it's a powerful thing and it's a way then to move forward.
Could we change into vote to agree with them?
Vote to support?
Vote to support.
I just think that's putting it in, because if someone votes against that, they're voting against supporting it. They're voting against approval. And we're not allowed to do that.
But what are we allowed to do with respect to you in terms of the school improvement plans?
If you have questions because you don't like a particular school improvement plan, it doesn't meet the guidelines, then it goes right back to the superintendent to say, why would you approve this? Why would this be something that you were okay with? And then the superintendent has to make the case for approving the school improvement plan.
Well, this is a first read, right? So we think on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the first reads. Then the next one is to act on dogs on school grounds, policy, policy KFC.
This one has come around a couple of times. And the, like a straight. And so the only language that was added was that notice will be posted. So we added that language and so that I asked that you vote to approve dogs on school grounds, the policy filed KFC.
So this would cover areas of schools where people who are allergic would not go to, right? The notice, the, they're not, so in other words, dogs can't be every single spot in the school? They have a certain area that they're allowed or not?
No, I think this is.
This is not about like service dogs.
Right.
That's your exception.
This is about.
Oh, the dogs, okay.
This is about, they can't be on grounds in general during school hours.
Correct.
I'm seeing something else.
That's right.
And the, the only issue with this one was that how come it's posted in some buildings and it isn't in others?
Right, right.
So that, we added the language that notice would be posted.
Okay. I vote to approve.
We need a motion first.
I make a motion to approve dogs on school grounds, KFC.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion point. So the, I feel it should add on there for, at all times, not on the playgrounds. Because I don't think, or even just in general, you know, with the playgrounds having the dogs, you know, going to the bathroom on the playgrounds and the next day the kids are exposed to issues. It may be tough to put the verbiage in there, no dogs on school grounds, period, at all times, you know, to enforce that. But in either case, I think it opens us up to liability when we say, you know, that somebody is on a Saturday at T ticket at the playground and then somebody has a dog that bites a kid. And then our policy is, is that, oh no, we only have the policy is no dogs on school grounds only when school's in session. So would that open us up for liability that we allowed it?
It's a really good question. I'm not sure that our policy can cover outside of school hours. We can check on that again, but I think we, we did that a while ago. I can regulate what happens during school hours, but it's town property and I'm not sure that off school hours I can do that.
Perhaps we can quote something in regards to leash laws?
There is a town ordinance, I believe, right, around leash laws and dogs, but not. You can certainly send it up to be looked at again.
So we, we did talk about this at the subcommittee. So we did talk about this at the subcommittee. And I think, you know, there's that notice that's posted. You know, really, from what I understood is that, like legally, we can't have control over what's happening on that playground when it's, school's not in session, it's town property. But because there's that notice there, I mean, people might abide by that notice anyway, because there's a notice that says no dogs. Plus, there is a leash law in Falmouth, so if there was a dog without a leash, that covers that piece of, there is the ordinance for that.
But along with the leash law, excuse me, along with the notice, could you add the leash law to that notice?
Well, that would be confusing, because you're saying no dogs, and then you're saying, leash your dog.
Yeah, but if I can't protect the property 24/7, then I would really like people to clean up. And sometimes the notification does help in supporting the cleanup effort. Not to totality, because I walk my dog on the beach. But the reality of it is, again, it's a notification to the public. I don't know if we can do that, or if it's possible, if the town can do that. But I think it adds to the whole thing.
It just would have to.
I understand.
It would be super confusing, okay.
Can we get an opinion from town council? I mean, because yes, the schools are town property, but there's lots of other town property. I mean, what is, what's the policy? For other, other town policy, you know, what's this town doing? Good to know.
I can certainly ask. I can send it back.
And then we may want to add to, not just dogs, but no dogs or, you know, pets or other, because you have, people have all kinds of unusual pets. Somebody could have a llama on the playground or something, you know.
If it's on a leash and they're cleaning up after it, that would be a problem.
I want to go to that playground.
But it off, it's a playground.
I can't tell people they can't play on the playgrounds at Monmouth School on Saturdays.
Yeah.
Right, that's, so I don't know. I can, I can certainly, I'll take it back again.
I'm picturing a llama on the playground.
I don't think llamas are good playground friends.
And I do think that other towns have like laws for town property, because definitely with travel, when you do travel soccer, like there are many fields that you cannot bring dogs to. So there might be other towns that have different enforcement of no dogs at any time.
Let's just get town council to let us know what the policy is with respect to.
Yep, you can do that.
Okay. We'll bring that back around. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is superintendent goals for 2016 and 17.
So in your packet is the latest version of my goals, and I've been working with the evaluation subcommittee to sort of refine them. Everyone's aware of my student learning goal. I developed that last year and it was a two-year goal. It speaks to district testing data, will demonstrate that all students will achieve one year of growth based on standardized test measures. We're still looking for that. My professional practice goal has changed a little bit, it's morphed a little bit. And what I really want to accomplish is really increasing my focus on quality education and equity of resources and opportunities for all students. And so we're going to continue to look at our district practices. The district is participating in an equity audit conducted by Boston College students, and I have supported the staff's participation in that. I'm hoping that we get recommendations from the audit team that we can take a look at and develop a district equity plan from those recommendations. I will continue to participate in Boston College in the doctoral program in educational leadership. And if you look at the benchmarks, we've had our visits from the student researchers. We have, they have the data on the district. I'll be getting that back and I'll present those findings to the leadership team. And then again, we'll start to really draft that equity plan. One piece that I think is important to note is that part of what we're doing in teaching all kids is taking a look at accelerating, students who are accelerating here in Falmouth, and how are we helping to support them. So we're going to continue our work with Janice Barron around that. We're going to continue our professional development. Another district improvement goal is to increase my visibility in all of the seven schools. And that's some feedback that I had asked for at the end of last year from teachers, not necessarily administrators. And the one piece that just, the theme that kept coming through is, we'd like to see more of you, we'd like to have more conversations with you, we'd like to see you in the buildings more. And so I'm making a concerted effort to do that. And I'll be doing some academic walks with Zach at the elementary schools and really trying to be more visible. It won't be perfect. I deal with a lot of HR issues and I can't always get out of central office, but I am making a concerted effort. And I have actually scheduled some time in to be able to do that. So I move on to my district improvement goals. And again, I still want to be, strengthen my understanding and participation in the budget planning and increase the interconnectedness among our instructional practice, contract negotiations, and overall fiscal health and my fiduciary responsibility to the town. And I have some key actions and benchmarks that I've listed there. And my second goal, again, is to maintain strong and sustainable relationships with other town departments, and that has come into razor sharp focus, managing the issues over the T ticket school. Another one of my district improvement goals is to design and implement the relocation plan for the T ticket school, which is targeted for the end of November. I did not go backwards and put the planning to do the relocation, because at this point my focus is, is to return the kids to the T ticket school.
Questions for Nancy?
Just a comment, very succinct. Good stuff, you're right on track. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that.
Can I make one comment? Just to add numbers, in here, we have one number in two, like for number two for district improvement goals, for two, maintain strong, sustainable relationships. So if we could just put one for strengthen my understanding of participation, and then three for design and implement the relocation plan. I'm sorry to pick that up earlier. Just so they're.
Oh, I see. So you just wanted to.
And then if we can number the professional practice goals too, just.
Interesting, because they, yeah, that's fine. I can number the goals.
Okay.
Because I think I had them the first time.
You did, yeah. And one, the two stayed, but, yeah.
Yeah, and all the other ones disappeared. That's okay, I can do that.
And I just noticed them recently, so I'm sorry, I didn't say that right.
So my hats off to both you Nancy in terms of developing this and the evaluation subcommittee in terms of your work for doing this. Great job. So my question to you Nancy is, as you look at your goals and you think about your goals and what you need key actions toward them, and you think about the year, where, where do you need our help and where do you need our support and what would that look like?
I think I've said it before, and it's budget season right now, but I definitely need help in the area of human resources. And I've said that repeatedly. It's just making sure that I can plan that in a responsible way in doing that. HR is a huge department, and I've done a lot of managing with that. The other issue is really, again, learning through experience with the T ticket school and, and taking a look at, a really close look at facilities management. And I have some ideas and some ways to do that incrementally, but at some point, I may want to present something that looks very different to the school committee. So really, just, I think having a really good understanding of what it is that I do and what I'm responsible for every day, I think would be really helpful.
Any other questions for Nancy? See, you're right next to me, I could call you right away.
Yeah, no, I don't have a question for Nancy, but this is maybe for the committee. Have we, have our rules changed? I mean, I tried to look over the.
Yeah, so I mean, I think.
More to do or?
Do we want to go into that now?
Or is this not, maybe not the right time?
Because we're going to go into all the, for the next, that's our next.
At the next meeting?
No, right now.
Next goal is the timeline and process.
Yeah.
Is that what you were talking about, Terry?
Yeah.
All right, so let's finish. Any further questions on the goals or any further discussion on the goals? Great, they're great goals. Thank you all for doing it. All right, next item is to review the timeline and process for the superintendent's observation. Is that you?
Yep, that's me. So going back to what Nancy was saying at the end of presenting her goals about, really, it is our role as this school committee to really support Nancy as the superintendent. And how we do that is, we actually have it kind of mapped out here. So we have our goal, which is the same as we had last year, that the school committee will be active participants in the evaluation of the superintendent by observing, collaborating around feedback and developing evidence. And we added benchmarks, so we're getting, we're getting better at this, thanks to Nancy's model. So our benchmarks are, and this goes with Terry, with your question, about having six observations throughout the year focused on the superintendent's goals as presented tonight, along with focused on the rubric. So it could be that you're seeing some of the standards or the being, you're observing that also.
Three?
Yep.
We had three last year, right? Not six, wasn't it?
We had nine. So everybody needed to do an observation last year. So this year, we're, we're limiting that to six.
Oh, that's the difference.
So that's the difference, yeah.
Three less people?
Right. Three, three less observations, yeah. And really, that was as, as the subcommittee hearing from Nancy and talking about, just kind of being bombarded at the end with a lot of observations was, was very challenging. So we also added these next benchmarks, that three observations completed prior to the mid-cycle evaluation. Now, the mid-cycle evaluation is December 13th, we're going to review the mid-cycle evaluation process, so January 17th. So we need to have three observations done by January 17th, and this is to kind of pace out our observations. And then there are three observations completed before the summative. So the summative is completed by March 28th. So we have three before January 17th, and then three before March 28th.
Technically, you have two, I've already done one. So that brings up the question, so, so, all right, you're asking for six, there's nine of us, who's doing them? And who's doing, who's doing the first set and who's doing the second set?
And then our, oh, sorry, you. So, yes, so our, our next benchmark here is that observations align with a variety of goals, and that there's actually going to be a way that we're going to keep track of who's observing what goal, so that they will be marked on a Google Doc. And that way, we know who's been doing observations and if we've completed our three. So we're not saying everyone has to do, is that, Nancy, do you want to add something?
No, I was just thinking about the Google Doc.
Yes.
Sharon, can you set that up for us? Okay.
So when you complete an observation, what you would do is you would let, maybe let Sharon know that, and then Sharon can mark the Google Doc? That's probably the easiest way, do you think, Nancy? Is that right?
Depending on how we set the Google Doc.
Okay.
Because you could go in and check off, maybe if it's like John Finari, and he looked at, I don't know, goal one or go and just.
So we'll work that piece out and let everyone know, but the goal is that, you know, we know what's getting done and when.
And that there's.
So I'm sorry, but I'm still confused. So what, I mean, thank you Walter for having done one, but how do we know that two out of the other eight of us are going to do one? By the mid-cycle evaluation?
There will be, we'll, we'll be monitoring that. So if no one's doing one, we will send out an email that says, please do an observation. But.
Or could people volunteer?
I think that people, yeah. If you're interested in doing an observation, if you have something that, looking at Nancy's goals now, if there's something that you're interested in seeing, right now is like the time to set that up with, with Nancy of saying, I'd really like to see you with your leadership team or.
I'm concerned that, that, that that level of looseness is going to come back and bite us.
And I think that's what we were, we were actually trying to eliminate a little bit of that by having redone by the mid. And if they're not done, then they don't get done. We're not going to push all six to the second week in March, because it's not reflective of what the year looks like if we do them all in the same week, in addition to the fact that it can be the same goal.
So I guess my concern is this, last year, we were all expected to do an observation. And almost all of them got done. When I read this, I could see a situation where Walter does one and the other eight of us don't. And you end up with no observations.
Yeah, I think everybody in the committee should do one too. I don't think it should just be six.
So the six came just because it really was, having nine at the end of last year was really hard.
Yeah, I get that.
Well, yeah, but so then maybe make it five in the middle of the year and, or four in the middle of the year or something like that, but.
Or, or, or just figure out who's going to do it. I mean, if it's a question of people volunteering or whatever. But I don't like the idea of it being so loose that if they don't get done by the middle, they're not there.
So could we send out, once the Google Doc is set up, we could send it out to everyone and have everyone pick the goal that they're interested in, in looking at and sign up, and then we'll know where we're at. And if we have four people sign up and that's it, then we'll make a plug to try and fill those last two. Would that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you get that done by the next meeting, December 13?
Right, Sharon? Yes. How about that? Will that work?
That, that sounds good.
It actually sounds ideal to know ahead of time, it's just.
Yeah. I think, I think the concern was just that, that nine's a lot. And so in thinking about kind of spreading this out.
And it's certainly harder for some people.
I'm fine, I'm fine with six. My concern was that I could see a scenario which that you don't get.
We have so much faith.
Okay.
Yeah, it was easier when everybody had that responsibility, it was, but it's.
What's the old saying, you know, have faith and then verify?
We have three major goals, correct? You have the student learning.
Well, there's multiple within.
Yeah, I understand that.
Professional practice, yeah.
But should, we have like two per goal, and then to really, then obviously, two people break that down. Maybe two people can read, break it down a little bit further, so then you essentially cover all the initiatives. So it's like, okay, well, we can all do student learning, that's good. Or we can all do professional practice.
Well, there are six goals. So there's a, the student learning goal, there's a, the first professional practice goal, the second professional practice goal, the first district improvement, the second district improvement, and the third. So technically, we could have, I mean, that would be the ideal situation, is that we have one person really targeting each of the goals. I don't know if that was done on purpose, but.
But it was really, it was good. Okay, so we'll work, we'll work on it.
Yeah. And if, you know, if we can have people sign up now, you know, it's like, then it's a commitment that, for the rest of the year.
I'd be happy to sign up for one now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you want to sign up right now?
If that's okay, like I don't, because I think that it's obvious for me to pick the T ticket school, the implement and relocation plan, just, I'm pretty invested in. So I would like to.
Yeah, I think that's great. Does anyone else have an observation you'd like to do?
John, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, I'm inclined to agree with Terry to have everybody have access to it, but we clearly, just from a logistics standpoint, have to start much earlier and organize it. If it did end up being. If it did end up being where you, you put it out to folks and you do only get six people signing up, you know, might, it might go that way just by attrition, what people trying to find the time for. But then once you, once we do have however many individuals are doing it, I'd suggest then just putting the goals into a hat and then assigning them whoever those, let's say you do get six that want to do it, you know, unless someone comes out, like as Melissa did, with something they feel strongly about right away, then just say, here's yours, here's yours, here's yours, and then you move on.
So does anyone have something that you'd like to sign up for?
No pressure.
Anything that you're passionate about?
Walter, which one have you already done?
Student learning.
I have a lot I'm passionate about just in general, but I have to really think about what I'd be able to commit to.
I did the student learning action B.
All right. So, so by, by the next school committee meeting, you'll have the process set up and at least identifying the first three.
We can do that.
Great. Thank you.
So continuing on here, so we have, so we had our subcommittee evaluation meeting where we went over the self-assessment, Nancy's self-assessment, and offered feedback, and then went over our first read of the goals and offered feedback on that. We also renewed our commitment to the goal, agreed on a timeline for the year, and this is the timeline. So today, we are sharing the superintendent's goals with the whole school committee, reviewing the timeline and the process for observations. On December 13th, there's, we're going to review the mid-cycle evaluation process. And a new component to this mid-cycle evaluation process is that we're going to actually be seeing the binder. Right, Nancy, that will be, so Nancy's going to be bringing that in with the evaluation subcommittee. So that's really nice, because last year we didn't embed that into our meetings, and this way we'll really be able to see what's coming around, so we can share that with you. There's some things to be shared. And then we will do the review of the formative mid-cycle evaluation at our January 17th subcommittee meeting. And then there will be the presentation of the mid-cycle evaluation on January 24th. And then on March 14th, there'll be a presentation on how to complete the superintendent evaluation. Remember that process, everyone, Bill? So we'll make sure everyone's feeling comfortable with that piece. And then March 28th is our deadline to submit your individual observations. And then there's in blue there, Friday, April 7th is the deadline for all individual evaluations, and you're, they're due to me by email.
And so to be clear, while there's only going to be six observations, we're all doing an evaluation.
We're all doing an evaluation, yes.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
So the observation is just really, it's additional evidence, and it's really having us be a part of seeing what Nancy does. And I think that really aligns with what, really when, when Nancy was saying about, you know, that we be aware of what she does. This is a way for us to go see her in action and really know the wonderful things she's doing. So April 11th, we're going to, this is going to be an evaluation subcommittee where we're going to summarize the summative evaluation. And then Nancy and I meet April 25th, and there is the presentation of the summative evaluation to the superintendent at that point. And then May 9th, the summative evaluation is presented and there is a vote. And then June 13th is the deadline to set date for the first evaluation subcommittee meeting for the next year, for August or September. We're really trying to start our timeline earlier. So that was a goal we had put forth for our subcommittee. And I, I want to just tell you that I'm going to send out a modified observation form. The old observation forms have Nancy's goals from last year, so it'll just be updated with the goals for this year. And if you remember, it's a kind of a checklist that you can check what goals your observation aligns with, or what's, and what standards. A nice way for you to organize that, and then for you to keep track that you are observing that goal that you think you're observing stuff. And there's just one section that says superintendent and one section that says audience. It's just a way to keep track of your notes of what, what Nancy's doing and then what the audience is doing. So you can use it or you cannot use it. You can use your own, but that's a resource for you. Along with, there is, there's the exemplar that was developed last year. And if you remember, there is, there's two components of how we wrote that up. There was the, the judgment and then the evidence. And so I will forward that to you guys too. It's as a resource of how to write up the observation. But a piece of this is just the, the steps to take. So you, if you are observing Nancy, you would organize that time that you're going to go observe her. And then you would do the observation. After the observation, you'll, your observation will be notes and you'll have some questions. So then you will meet with Nancy, talk about that. And then you'll do a write-up after that. So just making sure that you're meeting with Nancy in between, after you do that observation, you're meeting with her, do any clarification, any questions. And then you do a write-up. That write-up then is shared with Nancy for her feedback. And then once you guys have both agreed on that observation, you then email it to me. So I'll type that up too. So we have that kind of in writing for those steps.
And does the rest of the committee get these observations?
Yes. Yep. So this will be, so in our, we do the formative, yeah, the, the mid-cycle piece, we'll have those three. And we'll have to talk about how we get that to everybody.
So we have about 10 days. If, if somebody waits until the 28th to fi, to finish those observations, we have about 10 days to look at the observation before our evaluation is due.
Right. That's why the deadlines are early. So, because you'll want to see those and use them as part of putting together the...
Right.
...summative.
Okay.
I'm going to call attention to the time.
I'm aware of time, so... Any further, any more questions on this? All right. Thank you everyone for doing that. Quickly moving along, conducting routine business, approving the minutes from 10:25:16. Any comments on the minutes? You got a new version of the minutes at your table.
Because there was the section under the Vernal pool, there were a number of comments that people made, and they were accidentally just in the wrong section of the minutes. They were tied to marijuana instead of Vernal. We just moved it.
Yep.
And whether we accept the minutes as I second today.
Wait a second.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Terry? I have no report from the chair. Report from committee members?
I've been attending VIPS on, this Thursday at Motion at Mashpee Commons. All sales, 10% of the sales are being donated to VIPS to support the program, so Ben has Christmas shopping to do. This coming Saturday is the only track meet for the high school. Unfortunately, it now conflicts with a football game, of which I was hoping to go to, but, but that's Saturday. And it's something else. Wednesday, I believe is career day.
Thank you, Susan. Any other committee reports? John?
Just a comment. Last week I attended the MAS, MAS joint conference in Hyannis, like all of us, to congratulate Patrick Murphy, who was, took over as president of that organization, MAS.
Thank you. Congratulations, Patrick.
Thanks. Everybody very supportive, you know, and we're thrilled to have Patrick in that role. The, the week itself very productive, learned a lot as far as different things, social, emotional learning programs, virtual classrooms, made some good networking associations with two different school districts, Danvers and Linfield, who have both implemented the artificial turf solution. And actually have other relationships with both of those districts too as well that I can kind of leverage as far as moving forward with the DPW department and with the, the superintendent's schools and whatnot. So I'm going to learn more about that. Couple of interesting items I learned that they, they love the, the solution, but there were some things that wouldn't necessarily come up unless you're down the road. Like, for example, they don't allow Gatorade on it because Gatorade can discolor. So like the NFL can do that and dump Gatorade because they can replace a hundred thousand dollar section like that. But that's something to consider. And then, you know, also, I'm not saying that would necessarily, you know, go against it, but. And then another one was very interesting, no high heels on there. So if you have graduation, you'd have to consider that too. Just these, so these little relations, these relationships will bear fruit. But mainly I wanted to congratulate Patrick on his appointment.
Thank you. Any other reports from committee members? Any requests for follow-up information? Want to get motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bless you, Patrick.
Aye.
Aye.